Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call us to order. This is the regular meeting of the Danville City Commission for this Monday evening, February the 10th, 2020. Call us all to order if that's possible. And I ask that we be led in a moment of prayer by Commissioner Denise Terry.
Thank you. Please pray with me. Dear Lord, I pray that you guide us to satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Strengthen us as we make tough decisions. I pray that we will be fruitful and that you will guide us so that this meeting can be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And as always, I'd like to call on somebody special and different to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And tonight's lucky person is Jamie Payton. Come on, Jamie.
[laughter]
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done, ma'am. Commissioner, unless I hear otherwise, I will assume that tonight's agenda meets with your approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I believe you had one additional ad on the Airport Board appointments?
Actually, there were two.
Oh, two appointments but one ad?
Yes.
So...
And with your all's permission, I'd like to put that in after item one. Do I need pen?
Got to come prepared, ma'am.
I'm telling you. All right. Chair, um, excuse me, getting ready to do it again. We're going to move into the section called "Hear the Public." Five years, I'll learn. Now, this is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium on any subject that is on tonight's agenda. Anyone? Seeing none, we'll move on to item one, which is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that being January 27th, 2020. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, second by Commissioner Cottle. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. As Mr. Milliron indicated, I'd like to, let me give you a little history. For many, 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 many years, the Airport Board has had a six-member board. It's the only organization I know that's ever had an even number of people on the board. But if you check KRS, which we did, it says that airports can have boards consisting of six or 10.
Wow.
Problem still not solved. So, to their credit, they have seen fit to expand their board as they are beginning to see a broader vision for the airport. And so with that, the county's going to name two tomorrow. And I'd like to put before the commission the names of Jake Bell and Doug Gooch. In addition, I need to explain that the Airport Board is seeking to add two people from Lincoln County. Now, that's a big step because there's always been a little bit of a, well, that, the boundary fence, literally and physically. And they recognize that Lincoln County is a big part of the vision going forward. So Doug Gooch is the president and owner of AGE and also the chairman of their industrial foundation in Lincoln County. Jake Bell starts this week, he used to fly for United Express, he starts this week with Delta Airlines. And Jake has grown up out there. You know, they talk about some people being gym rats. Jake's been a hanger rat.
Yes, that's right.
And if it's got a propeller on it, Jake can fly it. So those two, Jake's young and that's a good thing. So that's my two people I'd like to see your approval on.
So there's going to be five added?
Four.
No, four.
Going to be four added.
Four.
Yeah.
So we're still an even number?
By KRS, you're an even number.
I'd like to make the motion to accept those two names to be appointed to the Airport Board as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Terry, discussion. I will add that, well, wait to see who the county appoints tomorrow. Pretty good.
I guess none of my choices were available. You didn't see my email?
No.
No.
Never mind then. Move on.
The county's taking him, right?
Yeah.
Superman.
Any further discussion?
Well, I'm just excited about Jake Bell's willingness to serve. And Commissioner Terry is always looking for those young Danvillians who still live amongst us. And this would definitely be a great example of one. Excited.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. And thank you for letting me insert that into the packed agenda. Item two is the CVB end-of-year report. Ms. Kirchner?
Hello. It's the end of the calendar year, but not the end of our fiscal year. But I do like to come in at the end of the calendar year. We're starting to talk about our next budget, as you guys are. So I wanted to reiterate that now's a great time to talk with the CVB about some goals and objectives you may have and want to share with us to include in our planning and budget season. I was reading over my executive report and I thought, huh, it's pretty good. Kind of speaks for itself. So you can see just simple graphs. We've continued to see an increase in revenue year after year. We've gone from about $172,000 in 2013 to nearly $28,000, nearly $28,000 in 2018 and 19 in room tax revenue. We also, it's important to note that while that's one stream of revenue, we also work to increase our partnerships locally through sponsorship and we have some contracting and consulting we do. And we've also done a fairly good job, I'd like to say, of doing grants and getting some private money investment. We, the other thing I wanted to mention to you briefly is just everybody has so many questions and there's so much excitement about us being on the Bourbon Trail now. We're the 18th stop. We have been talking about this for a while. We knew that it was coming and it's kind of like, okay, we're here, now what do we do? So the first thing I would say is, we've never done this before. So if you guys have any input or ideas, again, we're all ears about what fun things you think we can do. There's a lot of things that are in the works. We're working with our partners at Art of Danville and Chamber of Commerce. We're talking about doing a local campaign, like companies coming, just to kind of get our local folks to be bourbon entrepreneurs and experts themselves. I think the CVB for the month of May will do, if you're a Boyle County resident, you can go for free. Really, the more we empower the people who live here to tell our story, the more effective we'll be. So we're trying to work to get bourbon. And really, it already is. I mean, our local businesses do such a good job. You can find a Wilderness Trail cocktail on menus already and whatnot. So, but we're going to try and help be a liaison between the distillery and businesses. You know, can we get barrel heads and barrels and really, you know, gift baskets and hotel rooms, those types of things, really, to put that finishing touch. There's a ton of marketing that's happening. You know, we've long been sponsors of the Bourbon Trail and through that, we've had digital advertising on their website and we're part of their itineraries. We may consider increasing that sponsorship this year now that we have more to market. But we've long been part of the Bourbon Distillery itineraries. We've been on the Craft Trail. So just to give you an idea, the Bourbon Trail saw 1.4 million visitors in 2018 and the Craft Trail saw about 250,000. So your guess is as good as mine about what that means for Danville, but that's certainly an increase, quite a big one. So the marketing windfall is just something we could have never touched with our own funds. There are some challenges it will present that we'll need to keep working on as a community, such as transportation. That one keeps coming up in a variety of forms, whether it's more Lyft and Uber drivers, shuttles at the hotel. We're tapping into local tour groups that already have infrastructure, such as Midjuluv Tours in central Kentucky. So those things are in place, but we need to be creative about how we're really going to make this a hospitable place to come. We'll do things in the distillery, like have our website on display so people can see right there what the most up-to-date information is, so they hopefully stay. If you look at the Bourbon Trail, it's actually kind of a U and we're just right in the center of it. So we're going to really use that to our advantage. The last thing I would say that really ties it all together, that's part of a lot of the work that we do, the money that we brought in and the Bourbon Trail, is the Lebanon Road Corridor Trail that we're working on. You'll be hearing about more of this from the Trails Alliance and Parks and Rec. And we found a grant. We have the route identified. If you'll recall, we already have Woven Wire Mountain Bike Park open at the Still. We've largely started to promote that through our visitor's guides and a number of promotions where you can do dinner at the Still, mountain bike park ride. We have a good chunk, thanks to some private landowners and the industrial foundation, done in getting the Still to the distillery, sorry, Ambrevev to Wilderness Trail, so you actually could do a ride off of Lebanon Road. Really, it's beautiful, the section that we have now. It's quintessential Kentucky. It's great. But we do have some parts along Lebanon Road that we still need to connect. So this is my primer to you guys, that we've got some really good plans in the works and I think that the justification's now there to really invest in the infrastructure for this destination trail and tourism. And with that, I would see if any of y'all have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kirchner?
I do not.
No questions. Certainly exciting times for CVB with the Wilderness Trail making a step up and those are huge numbers.
Yeah, we're going to ride their coattails as long as we can.
Yeah. So I think we do need to have that discussion about transportation. It's been kicked around, not only for that, but certainly the hotels on the bypass and getting people downtown. So I think this commission may get involved in talking about that a little bit.
It's very true and has been observed many times that we will have upwards of 90% occupancy in hotels and downtown will have no cars in it. So there is most certainly a disconnect between the hotel stay and the downtown. And how we need to connect those dots is something we're always working on. And again, we're welcome, we welcome any ideas. But transportation, I think, is a big part of that.
Right. I might add just one thing. You don't, you can go if you want to, but you're being successful with the trails and certainly I'm involved in that. So Luca Morano will be on the trail. We'll be able to access that whenever...
Already connected. It's like we've been planning for this, isn't it, Rick? Yes, that section of trail is already on his property.
So the reality is you can ride distillery to distillery.
Yep. We've got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. You have before you the code report for the month of January. Excuse me. We had 97 complaints and inspections. We issued a total of 42 parking citations. We issued 22 business licenses, placed three liens, and recovered three liens. You can also see the condemned properties report behind there. And we added 647 Old Chequertown Road. It's unfit for human occupancy, so we've added the placard to that. And I'll entertain any questions you might have. And also note that our next Architectural Heritage Board meeting will be on February 19th at 9:30, if you're available. And next report, we'll have you an annual report of all our activities. And on the next agenda, we'll have the next round of certified local government grants for you to look at.
Any questions for... I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On Stamford Road, if you go out of town before you get to the intersection of 52, right before you get to the Tri-State Meadows on the left, there's a house sits there. It's very unoccupied and very old drunk.
I'll have the officers take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is item 4 resolution 2020-02-10-01. This is a rental agreement for property that we recently acquired, which we acquired in order to put our new water tower. We also had an opportunity to rent out the home for a period of time. And full disclosure, the occupant of that will be our new city manager since he has been unsuccessful in finding suitable housing here in Danville at a price that he thinks is fair.
Mayor, if I may, add to that conversation a little bit. It was suggested by former city manager Ron Scott during his transition with Mr. Milliron that in the absence of a quick residence find on the market, that that would be a suitable transitional housing opportunity. It should be mentioned that the city obviously is not receiving any income from the property now, has no intention of making that a long-term lease option for Mr. Milliron, or anyone else for that matter, as the property, the use of that property is a bit unknown, other than the location of a water tower as that project is deemed ready to build. So it would be typical in a negotiation with the city manager to provide for some transitional housing, which the city was not in a position to do pre-contract, and with the hope of Mr. Milliron to secure a prompt residence. And due to the fact that the city's not generating income from the property now, any amount of income the city receives would be a net positive.
It's a win-win.
And it's a win-win. It provides, again, it doesn't negate the contract principle with the city manager that requires him to find permanent residence within the municipal bounds of the district within a year, although this would be a month-to-month relationship, which would allow him to get out of a hotel and have somewhere to reside until he can in fact secure that permanent residence. And so the document in front of you is a proposal. The terms can be changed. It's rather straightforward before you. The highlights are simply that he would be renting the residence, not have rights to the entire five acres, but just the home that is actually there. And it would be on a month-to-month basis for the sum of $1,200 a month. And they would be due on the first of each month. Utilities would be required to be put in his name and paid for. And the city, of course, remains, retains all the typical rights of inspection and things of that matter. And deals with also a condition that obviously the keys will be returned upon the end of the tenancy. And furthermore, that the city manager will be authorized to do a couple of things in the property. First of all, have appliances, because there are none there. And also install a small fence, the cost of which he will bear. But at the end of the tenancy, he can either take the appliances with him, or he can have the city, deduct them from his rent and leave them. So it will be the option of the city to retain that as potential temporary housing in the future recruitment efforts of other employees that may be necessary, or guests of the city. And so those would simply serve as reductions in his rent that he would owe. Again, the result is still a net positive to the city's budget or coffers.
Does the chair hear a motion for resolution 2020-02-10-01?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Now in discussion, but it's been discussed. First question.
I was going to say, if you need help moving, I'll give you Mike's number. Just give me a...
He's got a nice big truck.
Another listed number, how do you do it? Any further questions? Speaking of chair, call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item five, similar to item four, resolution 2020-02-10-02. This is the city manager's contract amendment.
And Mayor, I can take this one as well, with your permission.
Could I stop you?
You can if you would like to, sir. At your meeting.
Proceed.
Thank you. Kentucky revised statute allows a top administrative official, such as the city manager, to opt out of the Kentucky retirement system, so long as there is an otherwise suitable retirement compensation package in place. And your existing contract contemplates involvement with CERS by the city manager, which requires a contribution of the city as well to participate in that program. It also allows for Mr. Milliron's ICMARC account to be funded in part by the city. And that is an account that is allowed, a retirement account that would be allowed between states, city managers, to take with them wherever they go. And in light of the fact that the SIR's contribution for officials is rising, there have been considerable cost savings to the city at the tune of a little over, or north of $90,000 over five years, that would be realized by the city if Mr. Milliron opts out of the CERS participation and the city fully funds his ICMARC account. You are partially funding it by contract now. However, with a maximum contribution, as established as a, whatever the federal government says the 401K maximum manual contribution is, then the city would still receive a cost savings of over $90,000 over the first five years of employment. There's a chart that details the cost savings in, at the very back of this agenda item that shows you what that in fact would be. It compares the SIR's contribution to the IRS maximum contribution amount, which even in this first year would be over $32,000, whereas the ICMARC contribution maximum would be $26,000. So those savings, again, added up over the first five years of his employment relationship with the city, north of $90,000. Therefore, we prepared a contract amendment for you that shows not only his revised start date, which you approved by resolution, or by voice vote actually, but also changes the contribution to the retirement system as stated. And approval would be effective as of the date of employment back to January 13th. I'm happy to field any questions, or of course, Mr. Milliron could address those matters as well, and potential cost savings and his desire to use them for other matters.
I'll make the motion. I move for approval of resolution 2020-02-10-02.
Thank you, Mr. Cottle. Or second?
Second.
Commissioner Terry. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So for full disclosure, yes, this is a net savings to the city. And it's my intent, actually, dollar for dollar, to quickly take the savings and address some of the starting pay. We have dire emergencies in both police, fire, and even Communications 911 on being able to recruit, and it boils down to start pay. We've got to start somewhere, and you'll hear later on in my city manager's report. But if I can at least start to get folks into the pipeline in our public safety by increasing their starting salary, I had to find money. So this is one attempt to sort of find money that otherwise the city was going to pay, but it doesn't stay with us. It goes into a state system. So this allows the dollars to stay local and then work with our department heads in those areas and increase the starting salary. That doesn't mean everyone else's salary is increasing. That's going to have to go through the budget process, but we have to find money to even address that. So that's the impetus and intent behind this proposed change. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
Well, we're talking about full disclosure, so how does this, this does not negatively impact our city manager's retirement plan? Right? This is not, this is not going to negatively impact your retirement, right?
Yep.
No, it doesn't. It just changes his, he will not participate in the Kentucky retirement plan system. He will simply have the ICMA, which is like an IRA account, essentially.
I hope our ICMA is better funded than the Kentucky retirement system.
It's not. Not connected to the government, in a sense, right?
So it's actually better for him also?
I would venture, without looking at the models, that the rate of return would be better than the state pension system.
No other, no other comments? Call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Now, Mr. Milliron, your report, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission, a couple of things. So speaking of recruiting, in about a week, we'll have a representative from TD Media Services onsite. They're actually going to work with a police department, the fire department, and our 911 communications. And they're going to put together some very quick Danville-specific recruiting videos. This is done ahead of the fact that we're about to go to the market for new fire chief recruiting. But at the end of the day, you can start with basic starting pay, but you also have to tell the world the greater story of working here at the city. And so that's the purpose of getting those very quick recruitment videos out there. There'll be three videos. Our cost is $500 per video plus the cost of an airline ticket, which is an incredible great deal. The second is, I'm in negotiations with a marketing firm called Mop Dog. And at the end of the day, positioning the city, getting employees to understand and the community to understand the value that each employee brings to operate the city. Something as simple as what happens, you know, when you turn on your water and who's responsible? Because there's always the belief that it's just public safety that works 24/7, but they fail to see the folks getting up in the middle of the night to take care of, you know, your snow or trees that fall down, or the fact that our wastewater and our water plants are staffed around the clock. And then something as simple as, say, Public Works out, you know, cleaning the roadside or planting trees and flowers, how that actually evolves into economic development for the community. So the purpose of this is to actually put together a robust, multi-platform media campaign to showcase the value of working for the city and showcase the greatness of our employees and what they do for the community. So working on that. Request for proposals, or RFP for short, we've got, we opened up the healthcare broker RFPs. It is, I told you last meeting, I'm allowing no stone unturned. So as I'm looking at everything that's coming up for renewal, we are looking at, is there a more effective or efficient way to do it? So we put out the RFP. The next process is to go in and boil down the submittals down to basically the semifinalists, do oral presentations with them, and then choose a broker if there's to be a change or otherwise, and then bring that to the commission so they're aware of the change. Also, we're working on, coming up for renewal is our solid waste contract. We've got a 10-year contract, so we're working on the RFP for that. I mentioned the fact that we'll go out to bid on our auditor, and so we'll put out a request for a proposal on auditors. And then also, I'm looking at the way the city acquires vehicles. So I'm looking at our enterprise contract as well, because we've got several vehicles that are coming up for purchase. I want to give a couple shout-outs. The first is to Captain Mullins in the Police Department. He's attained his intermediate law enforcement certificate within the career development program, which is a great accomplishment. And then also telecommunicator Tracy Lynn in our 911 communications division. And she has actually earned her coveted intermediate public safety dispatcher certificate from the Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice. So those are great achievements and it brings value back to the city on a daily basis. Speaking of budget, we met with the commission, obviously, on Thursday as part of the goal setting with the management team. So we have a draft document that we've circulated with the commission. So we have a draft document that we've circulated with the commission. It's in your email, but I've got printed copies for you as well. We, as, the management team, has also done a capital project review. We're starting to look at dollars and cents and sort of updating that 10-year outlook as we move forward to the budgeting process. And part of that is, one of the priorities of the commission, but also myself, is to look at a total compensation report. We really have to take a look, a hard look at salaries and benefits. We're, we're in times of changing dynamics with folks that have been with the city 20-plus years versus folks that are just coming to the city, and the wants and the needs and the desires of recruitment are different. So we want to take a look at everything, come up with a plan, present it to the commission after vetting it with departments and staff, and then decide what makes sense as I make my budget recommendations to the commission. As part of the budget, we'll be publishing a budget calendar and also having a couple public input sessions. Regarding the fire chief recruitment that I did mention, the goal is to have a fire chief, whether again inside or recruited from outside, onboard by July 1st. It makes sense, timetable, we met with the outside recruiter on Thursday. We're working on a draft recruitment brochure that will be published. Again, it'll coincide with the video, sort of showcasing our fire department. But the goal is that that's the start of the budget year, and it makes sense that whoever's the permanent fire chief, hopefully onboard and starts July 1st. And then our new human resource manager, Randy Boyd, was with us on the goal setting on Thursday, but will be starting on Monday. And I love it when staff comes up and says, "So do you think it'll be okay if we put a big old welcome banner across this door?" And I'm like, "Heck, yeah, and bring the balloons and everything else." So with that, thank you, Mayor and Commission. That concludes my report.
Any questions, first?
When will we receive the budget calendar? Do you know?
Once I have it, you'll get a copy. It'll also be published on our web and also on our, on our social media sites.
We are down the section on here, the public. This is the public's opportunity to take three minutes at the podium and address any subject that is not on tonight's agenda. Ms. Calhoun?
Yes. I have several things that I would like to have done at Michael M. Memorial Park. I'm Jay Woods. The kids need more play equipment, and like picnic tables and benches, a water fountain. Because it's a, it's a big park. And where the pool used to be, Mr. John wants, Belle wants to turn it into a little basketball for the kids, because they won't let them play at the one at the back, the older kids want. And they come running to me, you know, I said, "Well, I'll take it to the city hall and let them know." And I think, yeah, a water fountain. What about an outhouse where they can use the bathroom?
We'll make note of that.
And a member from the Church of Vision brought it to my attention last night. When you come down on Lexington Avenue, want to cross over McMillan or Swope, there's a big pothole. I mean, a big. And still got potholes around down. People just don't turn them in, you know. The road needs fixing. But we trying to make the park nice for people to come during the summer, because they get ready to have a gospel thing down there in March. And, you know, some bring their, you know, own chairs, but it'd be nice if you have picnic tables and benches, water fountain. Trying to bring it up like it did Lexington Avenue. I mean, Lexington Road. Some kids can't get out that way. They don't have transportation. And just like she was saying about, Danville really needs transportation. You know, like over in Lexington, you catch the big buses and go, you don't pay that much. Maybe, I don't know how much, about $2. Danville is grown. And even the Center College students talking about it, you know, they can't get nowhere. And we need big buses. Because if you take these buses here, it's $5 going and $5 back. You might as well fill your car with it. You can't afford it. And I think in buses over there, it's what, about $2? In Lexington, they come as far as Nicholsville, but they need to come to Danville. And that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Doesn't Dan Tran run and make these trips?
You have to have a three-day notice.
Three-day notice, okay.
Three-day notice. You can't afford no $10, that's why I got me a car.
And I think it's a dollar something a mile.
It used to be a doll, way, way at the Blue Bus, a doll going to Walmart, but why it doesn't so now?
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Moving right along. Commissioner comments? Mr. Atkins?
Tell them why you're wearing red.
What's that?
Why we're wearing red.
Don't even be speaking out loud, they also need trash cans.
Commissioner Terry. Commissioner Terry wanted me to tell you why I'm dressed up in my red today, and did not have to do much with Valentine's Day, but it's National Heart Awareness Month, and so we were all encouraged to wear red to show our support. Some other announcements, though, is that free movies throughout the community continue throughout the month of February. February 13th at 6 o'clock, this Thursday, at the Public Library, it's Red Tails, Mr. Hunt. In February the 17th, it's American Creed at the Center Library at 7 o'clock. It asks the question about what does it mean in 2020 to be an American citizen? And in February the 20th, another Thursday night at 6 o'clock at the Public Library, Barbershop's going to be shown. And then February the 27th, 6 o'clock at the Public Library, A Raisin in the Sun's going to be shown. Free popcorn and free soda pop for all those in attendance. And then throughout the rest of this month, on Wednesdays and Fridays, February the 12th, 19th, and 26th, February the 14th, 21st, and 28th, free admission to the Great American Dollhouse Museum. And I am trying to catch up on all my Advocate message newspapers, and I want to say a shout-out to The Advocate and shout-out to the owners of the Great American Dollhouse Museum. What a great story. January the 23rd or something? I can't get the right date. I've been reading some of the newspapers, but a great story about the Great American Dollhouse Museum and a reminder about its importance to our community and a reminder about if you are 60 years and beyond, free admission to the Dollhouse Museum throughout the month of February, but just on Wednesdays and Fridays, though. So please get out, show your support.
Mr. Terry?
February the 20th, that's a Thursday, is the Happy Hearts Luncheon that the hospital hosts for healthy heart awareness and specifically women's heart health.
What about my heart?
Mr. Carl?
I was going to mention that it's Minister Gay, he's still here? There's an event coming up tomorrow, correct, at the library?
Tomorrow night, real quick, tomorrow night is out at Inter County Energy at 7:00 PM. It's a public forum about the 2020 census.
Do you want to repeat that? Do you want to repeat that so they can hear?
Why don't you come up here, Mr. Gay?
I might just mess that up.
Thank you for that. It's a, it's a women's network of Boyle County is sponsoring an open community forum on the 2020 census and the importance of the census to the community. So that's at 7:00 PM Tuesday, February 11th, at the Inter County Energy Community Room. So thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Mr. Carl?
You done? Yeah, I got a couple things I usually do. I've been attending some of the board meetings of some of our contributing groups, and I went to the Heart of Danville. They have some new members that have complemented already a good board, a couple of folks with experience working with downtown places. So I'm kind of excited to see what they'll come out with for this year 2020 in terms of that new energy and that expertise. And I routinely, if I can, make it to Convention Visitors Bureau. They're, they're pretty exciting, too. I think that Jennifer and Jamie are doing a good job, and their board is very supportive of them. And, you know, it makes me feel good to go to these things and see we have some really intelligent people in this city that are behind some of these things that we're trying to get done. So I appreciate doing that. And so, not to leave out our Parks and Rec director, so I'm going to call on him. What's the national day of what for February?
I was waiting for it. Two weeks from today, February 24th, National Corn Tortilla, or excuse me, Corn Chute Day. So free nachos at Bunny Davidson are all there.
Free nachos.
And where is it going to be?
Bunny Davidson.
Okay.
That's the 24th?
Yep.
Okay.
Who keeps track of this stuff, John? Who keeps track of this stuff, Sarah?
There is national everything.
During public comments, there was some mention of Smith Park and something coming there. Earth Day will be there in April. Earth Day is moving back to Smith Park. They went out to BCTC for some time, but they want to come down to Smith Park, and I think that's going to be great for our community. Not that it wasn't a good spot out of BCTC, but it does showcase the park that we're cleaning up. And part of that day, I'll be leading a tour de ville if anybody wants a little history of some of Danville's things on bicycles, so we'll be doing that. And the last thing I want to address is, of course, we caused quite a stir talking about our fountain at Whisega. And I just want folks to be clear that there was a group of people that offered to put money in to redo that fountain. We appreciated that. I don't think anybody up here really wanted to take that money, but we wanted to take a relook at it. And so it was nice of Randstadter and Carroll to re, or actually, I was expected of them to take, take a relook at it, and they did that gratis, as far as I know, unless something happened I didn't know about. So we appreciate that. And then that number got thrown out there that got everybody stirred up, and that was that, that $100,000 number. We up here did not say too much about it, and I apologize for that. But I think we wanted to see what the real number would be before we made any decisions. Am I correct on that, everybody? Yeah. And there's nothing hurting doing that, finding out what the real number is. And then it may give us some, some thought on some different things if we don't want to go with a fountain, because we certainly need some shade there. But I just wanted to make that statement, because I know it caused a lot of stir, and that's, that's okay. I'm all right with that. But this is where we're coming from up here.
Mr. Mayor, I had written down this little note to myself and then forgot to read it, but I want to compliment our city manager. You know, I've designated 2020 for the city of Danville as a, to focus and report and work on city employee morale. And I think tonight, your city employee shout-outs was a great start. I want to encourage you and thank you for doing that, and please encourage you to continue that.
Congratulations to Grace Cafe for being recognized at the Bluegrass Tomorrow Annual Meeting. I don't remember the name of the award, but it was nice to see them get that recognition.
A Community Visionary Award.
Yeah, that one. Community Visionary Award. And a shout-out to Jennifer Kirchner, who I'm sure was instrumental in making that nomination, as she is on the board of the Bluegrass Tomorrow. As I was looking through the annual report, it's been pretty fascinating over the last 10 years, and I think of the 10 years, either seven or eight of those years, there's been something in our community that's been recognized by Bluegrass Tomorrow. And I like that kind of exposure. Wednesday night, we have KLC Board Meeting and the City Day, City Night. This is the opportunity for, for cities to combine efforts on a lot of fronts. We get the Kentucky League of Cities Board Meeting done, but it gives us a chance to also meet with our legislative representatives, which we're doing at 11:00, 11:30 that morning, and then to continue to mill with other legislators and have a board meeting that afternoon.
May want to mention, I've got voices coming, is there another person up here?
Where'd that come from?
Your phone. Siri. Siri wasn't talking to you?
She's not on.
I didn't think mine was on.
That opportunity does come Wednesday, but it was a good gathering today. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, thank you. We had Rick Gerdler, Senator Rick Gerdler, and Representative Daniel Elliott, who hosted a coffee this morning from 10:30 to a little after 12:00 today. Informative, broad discussion, fair and honest discussion about a number of topics. And I think we are very blessed to have those two people represent us in Frankfurt. And that, that's a, I wouldn't have their job, but they do it, and they do it well.
I also think there was a lot of emphasis today. They covered a lot of subjects, but for the public's knowledge that wasn't at the meeting this morning, there was a lot of conversation about safety downtown, so that should be encouraging for you all. They were listening, they were taking notes, and I'm feeling better about it, and I'll give a little shout-out to the group Cupid, because it takes, it takes a community to get it through.
I think that concludes all of our remarks. So we'll move right on into item seven, payment of the bills. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bills as presented.
So move?
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins, Commissioner Terry. The bill amount is $977,312.12. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item eight, the second reading of ordinance number 1944. This is the second reading of our bond ordinance, which we did at our last meeting. Mr. Dexter, would you like to read the ordinance?
I will let the city clerk do that, Mayor.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 1944, an ordinance of the city of Danville, Kentucky authorizing the issuance of its general obligation public project and refunding bonds, series 2020, to pay and reimburse costs of public projects and to refund outstanding obligations of the city, approving the form of the bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore created sinking fund, approving and authorizing the advertisement and acceptance of bids for the purchase of the bonds, undertaking continuing disclosure obligations with respect to the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances.
I move for approval.
I move for approval of the second reading of ordinance 1944.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Cottle, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Serres, discussion?
I want to remind people, and we said in the first reading, that in doing this, we're saving the taxpayers $375,000, so that's pretty huge.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Terry?
Yes.
Mayor Pears?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cottle?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Serres?
Yes.
Do we have a need for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have a need for executive session for personnel reasons.
Do I hear a motion? Then we move into executive session. Thank you, Commissioner Cottle.
I move into executive session to discuss the personnel matter pursuant to KRS 618101F.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, we will move into executive session, but...
I move that we go back into regular session.
We have a motion to go back into regular session.
At the request of our city manager.
At the request of city manager David Milliron, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Terry. All in favor of moving back into regular session, say aye.
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 Pose like sign. We are in regular session, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your motion for executive session for personnel. I need you to please amend that to also add property acquisition.
All right. So noted, Commissioner Cottle?
Do I need to do them both or just add that one, you suppose?
Just amend.
All right. In addition to the prior executive session motion, I would like to add a motion to go into executive session regarding potential real estate acquisition for which publicity at present stage might or would likely affect value per KRS 618101B.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Terry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Aye.
Everybody have a good evening. Commissioner Cottle, that we go into regular session?
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Commissioner Serres. All in favor of going into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like session, we are in regular session. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you. This is a request for confirmation for three personnel-related matters. The first would be a recommendation for the hiring of part-time dispatcher, it'd be Karen Davis, a conditional offer of employment to Mr. Ray Bradshaw, and then the hiring of Keith Edison in the police department.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, in discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Any further business to come before us? Seeing none?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made to adjourn, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.